Here we go. This was 6:30. Kind of late, huh? Said 6:30.
Maybe, yeah. Yeah, I think it was.
Because he may not be here.
No way. If he doesn't show up today, no way.
Because my car's...
So you take those three out and then do shift. Did you get the budget?
We'll have to call the meeting board for the 2024-25 budgets lead.
At flagging the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir, sure. Okay, so you should have a budget packet in front of you. There's four sections to the budget packet. One, budget for each of the funds, general, sewer, major, and local streets. At the workshop, the estimated funds, the numbers on those budget packets do not include the actual tour march, which was just approved today. So it's the actual up through today. You will also notice that the packet includes what was actually spent fiscal year '21, '22, '22, '23, '23, '24, '25. So typically, we have four years of actuals, last year's budget, and then this year's current budget. All the details around there, I can answer any questions that are on any of them. Overall, I guess just give an overall summary. The budgeted revenues to expenses for the general fund have a surplus of $20,000, approximately $20,000, $20,547. If you look at the very last, I think that is, it'll be page three of the general fund. The sewer fund has a overage of about $3,200. The major streets has a surplus of $45,000. The local streets has an overage of about $5,000. So all in all, if the general funds are leveraged to cover the overages for the two funds, the amount remaining for the general fund will be about $12,300. So that is where things are at. The one thing I did find since the workshop meeting is the major streets fund does not have a street administrator budget line item that will need to be added. The local street, the street administrator, has about $600 allocated to it, so we could probably do about $800 for the major street administrator. Other than that, yeah, I can answer any questions on anything that we have. That was, we covered line by line in the workshop, went through everyone, so unless there's any major changes. Or if you're trying to budget down to zero on a general fund, then you just need to determine where do you want the extra $12,000 allocated to.
Well, I was looking at it because the trash, the first couple of lines on there, in the past, it's been like $87,000, $54,000, $36,000. We have it as $31,000. Should we put that there? I feel like we might need to make that a little bit more.
So what happened, what's happened in the past is those funds were misallocated. So really what happens is your taxes have a local operating amount, and then they have a trash. Your trash is a special assessment. The special assessment for trash, the trash funds must go to trash. They can't be used in your general fund, so they needed to be separated out. So for this particular
Cycle.
Cycle, this budget, I've actually separated them out. And so really what will happen is, and I'm probably going to go back through the last fiscal year and see, I think you actually had a larger expense on trash, which actually I could look at it and see, you did have a larger expense on trash. Let me find it real quick. So what really that means is you would want to make the determination if you feel your trash assessment should go up. The trash assessment should just cover the cost of the trash. You don't want to make money on it, but you don't want to use other general funds on it. So if you look at, I'll find it. Refugees collection, your expenses on that were $14,142. The actual revenues that you took in on your trash was, I think, about $13,000. I had to split them out. So you're actually funding about $1,000 from a general fund for trash rep assessment. So you would then just take the overage divided by the number of parcels, which I think you had about 121, and the amount of difference you would want to change your special assessment to. But this would be the meeting you'd want to do that at. That wouldn't take effect till October for the winter taxes, and then that would be next year's. So this budget cycle, you're probably already still be under on your trash assessment, at least until around December. I'm sorry, January next year. But your local operating is, you know, from your general fund, your second biggest source of revenue, your biggest source in your state sharing revenue. Your local operating is going to continue to drop every year because of the headland amendment, so your taxable value of your properties reduces every year. And so that's really accounting for some of the revenue changes. This particular budget, I believe, does not include the potential revenue from the marijuana licensing, this just as your lease revenues from the building. So that's actually a source that would probably go up quite a bit.
Well, I do know that the waste collections are, they're still a process of getting the numbers together, but generally speaking, we'll build that up in July. And that'll be for a household, and then once we know that by then, we can do that fluctuation, but right now, we have no idea.
That's why a lot of times at this time of year, you're kind of guessing. So I have to go back and remember, I can't remember off the top of my head what your current trash assessment was.
It's approximately $116.
It's $116, that's right.
Yeah, and my fear is everyone else around is paying $170 to $200.
Oh, yeah.
So we anticipate that, that much I don't know.
Technically, you could go to like around $120, and then put that in now. It won't take effect till next year, but then at least your, I think, small improvements are going to be a lot easier for residents than having a big major change next year, because you wouldn't be able to change the assessment again till next budget cycle, which would be next month, so.
Yeah.
That is a different house. Kurt, the 000689, the marijuana facility. We have, we get the $60,000 for the rent, but we also get $10,000 for their license. So we need to add that probably on there or do a separate category for it.
Probably. Are you talking about $10,000 for what license?
For a year, $5,000 a year for each property, the girl facility, the dispensary.
All right.
Are you going to add to that totally, or?
I'll probably put another line in.
Yeah, just so we have it separated a little bit.
One thing I would, I guess what you're going to do, and I have one request.
Sense.
What did you hear, that you want to bring?
Just to consider, start considering the addition of a line item for software. The current software we're using for this village is already three years outdated. All of the new, it's unfortunate because all new software basically goes from a, the days of going into a store and buying a piece of software and being done with are gone. They all do subscription-based services. I did actually spend some time to evaluate other options, so QuickBooks was one, which you're using QuickBooks now, so going to their QuickBooks, their next, their upgrade for that, you know, their newer version for that. Check Acufund software, Sage, Vannion software, BSNAs, so there's about five different softwares. They're all quite a bit more money, probably not worth the squeeze for this, what this village needs, but at some point, you're probably going to have to consider QuickBooks or something else, you know? If the software dies, there's no way to get it back. It's just going to be dead. So probably just something to start considering as a line item. It's just the cost of doing business now is having IT software, so. I think we can buy this year, but definitely need to consider for the one before.
I would also like maybe to take a direction with the local and major streets. We had the ability to combine those into one, and there were some requirements that we had to go through on, and that's, you know, you could take that one of the horns, right? Because it, take work on that stage.
Oh, yeah.
Because I break down that stuff, and it's, for this village, it's not feasible.
Right. Just a couple of things that I will be attempting to do, so there's some general cleanup, there's a lot of, I'm going to call pass ins, and kind of some of the goals still need to be cleaned up. But as I mentioned, we're going to be opening up a sweep account that's going to allow us to get a lot more interest on the money that we have. That will join a lot of our investment incomes into that, so that's going to be something to do. I do think probably going to need to evaluate the banking institution, you know, and see what our options are there. I still haven't had a lot of luck with what we're going through, what we've done there. There's something else. Oh, yeah, so these, so this, these funds, I guess there's two things I'm just going to share with you guys. So one of them is, all of these line items are part of your chart of accounts. Your chart of accounts has specific numbering and ordering to them. That numbering and ordering is defined, or needs to be defined, by the state of Michigan. The state of Michigan provides a Michigan chart of accounts. Some of these match the state chart of accounts, some don't. It's probably just a carryover from the history in the past. So one of the first things we need to do is get these chart of accounts in line with Michigan chart of accounts. So basically what happens, a lot of the ordering and organization that you see on that budget will just be shifted around. A lot of what will happen too is, you want your chart of accounts to be probably department-based. As a good example is, all of the expenses and salaries and everything for the police department should be pulled together. It should be easy for you to see what is the total cost to fund the program. What is the total cost for all of our industry stuff? What is the total cost for all this thing? That gives you a better idea of how you budget for those things going forward. So next year at this time, those should all be reorganized in that fashion so that you can see that. Just one other thing. So I had it and I forgot it. Given tools, I guess. It'll come to me, and I'll share it with you, but that's all I have for that. So I guess ultimately, just a question is if you're wanting to, oh, that's what it was, related to your zero budgeting, if you're trying to get to zero budgeting, you just need to identify which area you want to put the current surplus of the general fund into. Usually, an easy one is roads, maintenance, things that are always high expense items. The other thing to consider is, what you don't see on this budget is what I'm going to call the fund balance. The fund balance is taking all of your assets, all your cash, minusing all of your liabilities. You don't, you don't see any of the liabilities on here. Your liabilities are like your payroll liabilities, you know, fund transfers, those kinds of things. When you add up, and when you put them all said and done, you have a fund balance. You typically want to have a policy at this village level as to what amount of fund balance you feel comfortable with. A good example is saying, we want a fund balance that would fund three months of bills, six months of bills, whatever it is, so that you then, whatever, whatever level of conservative fiscal safety you want to put on your funds, that's, the council would decide, and say, we want to maintain a fund balance of X percentage of our yearly income. Some people do a year, some people do six months. We had settled on three months at Maple Grove, so. But then, you would then make sure that your surplus or everything goes towards ensuring you have that proper fund balance, and then everything else would be spent or allocated, incurred, right? So we don't have that number now of the fund balance, just because of the cleanup that has to happen.
Right.
But if you guys wanted to determine what level you were comfortable with, that would be what we would then work towards this year to getting to. It would be the goal, and say, okay, we want to have four months of bills, then that's what we would work towards. And make sure all the numbers match up for that. That's the other thing I'll throw out there for you to consider.
Yeah, I like the idea of the three month or quarterly because the seasonal type of thing might go along here.
And a lot of times what happens is, you're going to have months where you have less revenue coming in with a lot of expenses, so you need to make sure you have cash flow available to pay those bills during most times, and that's usually what your fund balance helps support, so.
Yep.
I don't have a good sense yet of what your yearly cycle is yet, you know, obviously only been in for two months or whatever, but over the course of the year, we'll get a better sense of that. A lot of your money probably comes in in the winter, winter taxes, would be my guess, but.
We don't have winter taxes.
Yeah.
Well, but you have your summer taxes.
You have your summer, that we're talking about, this general.
Yeah, I don't think we can go with it, if you don't like it now, then we don't.
Other than that, all you would need is just a motion to support the current budget, and then it would be active for this fiscal year.
Huh?
Oh, these, these numbers here, those are, would be on our budget, the numbers right there.
It's your last column, your rightmost column would be your budget for the year for the sewer funds. Your major street fund does have significant surplus, so that's to be expected, that's what it's supposed to be, that's what the four savings for your larger projects.
We still have, we do have to add that $10,000, because we know that is officially there, so we need to put that somewhere out, right? We have to be able to spend that.
With that added in, your current surplus is at $22,000. Keep in mind, a lot of these are estimates, you know, a lot of your revenues are estimates, so really, within six months, we would do a better, we would even see where we're at actual assessments, but it's probably pretty close based on storehold review here.
Do I want to make a motion? Yeah. Part of the, by, by the.
Make a motion during this, or do we?
No, we'll do it, it doesn't have to be accepted by the, but more interested. You want to do it in a group, or you want to do each, cut one, this time around?
I would do it as a group, right?
I would think so, because like I said, they're all going to change. I'd like to go to the zero, but we really can't at this point until we know what things are.
Yeah, well, that's what, that's where I was, that's what I was wondering about, because we've always done it to the zero, right?
Yeah.
But do we have to do it that way?
No, no, it's like you said, the, the, having that fund balance at the end, and then work off of that. If they use three months, I like the three months because of the quarterly, you know, December, January, that, we don't, we don't know, but this next three months will be for right now, so.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, I, I think that would be the worst thing after. So, yeah, but do we, we don't, do we need a motion now, or just?
No, no, I, I just, I do want to get a.
I think we do want to approve the budget at this meeting, I think.
Well, we, but we vote on it at, at open, regular.
So I make a motion to approve it at this, and then we make a motion for it to affect us, like, regularly, right? We do this every year, and I forget.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the budget with the changes that we've discussed, correct? Second.
Second, like Kelly. For discussion, all of the tag.
And so maybe, in one of your meetings, have a discussion on the fund balance allocation at some point, if that happens today or whatever.
When's that going to be posted, so we can see it?
What's that?
The budget? Don't say never.
It seems like it sometimes, but it'll be posted.
I'll make a motion to adjourn project, sorry.
It says Marcy, Marcy, post it.
Is there something we don't know about?
I'm sure there is.
Is that Marcy answering? Yeah, I don't know, it was 2020, it was last time, or a couple of days ago.
Hi, we have all the meeting order, regular meeting order for March 11th, 2025.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here, Shrem.
Here.
Kelly, here. And.
All right, council has before them a copy of tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, second.
Shuniman motion, Kelly on the second. Correction, discussion, all of the big guy.
Aye.
Opposed, most carries.
February 11th, 2025, we need to hold an order at 7:00 PM with the pledge of allegiance. Rule called trustee T. Fish, trustee Shuniman, trustee Kelly, president Fish, clerk Hart, and treasurer Yarros were present, trustee Shremes was absent. Shuniman made a motion to approve the agenda, seconded by T. Fish, motion carried. Shuniman made a motion to approve the January minutes with corrections, seconded by T. Fish, motion carried. Shuniman made a motion to approve the treasurer's report as read, seconded by T. Fish, motion carried. Shuniman made a motion to approve the police report as read, seconded by T. Fish, motion carried. D. E. W. with wastewater, Fish reported that the D. P. W. has been quiet. Fish informed the council that he hired Kennedys to fix electrical issues at the pump station. The valve needs to be replaced and it will cost about $6,000, $6,000 for the valve and $4,000 for locker. It will take about six weeks to receive the part once it is ordered. Kennedys wants us to sign a contract with them to complete the work before they order the valve. Fish pointed out that the valve has lasted almost 15 years. Shuniman made a motion to enter into contract with Kennedys to perform valve replacement on the pump station in the amount of $10,000 or greater, seconded by T. Fish, motion carried. Guest speakers, public comment on the current agenda none, old business none, new business. Clerk Hart informed the council that the Chiwasi River Water Trail Coalition is looking for two representatives from the village to attend quarterly meetings. Trustees T. Fish and Shuniman agreed to attend as our representative. The council discussed the budget workshop and decided to hold it February 22nd, 2025 at 1:00 PM. The workshop will be held at the office, so we have access to the computer, clerk Hart will post it in the paper and on the site. Shuniman made a motion to hold a budget meeting on March 11th, 2025 at 6:30 PM at the village hall, seconded by T. Fish, motion carried. Shuniman made a motion to add Kirk Yarros to the following bank accounts at Citizens Bank. General fund checking, general fund petty cash, general fund C D, major street checking, major street C D, local street checking, local street C D, operation and maintenance sewer checking, long-term asset savings, short-term asset savings, short-lived asset reserve savings, wastewater special assessment savings, operation and maintenance sewer C D. Seconded by T. Fish, motion carried. Shuniman made a motion to pay bills, seconded by T. Fish, motion carried. Public comment, a resident asked about purchasing the dump truck, president Fish said it was appraised at $45,000 and we were still trying to find the best way to sell it. He said auction companies take 10 to 15%. She asked if he would be putting D. P. W. magnets on the new D. P. W. truck, Fish said yes. She asked if we could see what equipment is in the village buildings, Fish said yes. She asked where traffic will be rerouted during the watered street project. Fish said it is an engineering issue, so he is not sure yet. A resident asked if Fish is a licensed plumber or licensed electrician, Fish said no. Clerk Hart did note that he was the only one in the village licensed to be a wastewater operator. Another resident asked when the dispensary will be up and running so the village can start seeing funds. Fish said they passed their last inspection, so they should be opening soon. A resident asked if the black blue truck is a police vehicle. Clerk Hart said it was given to us from Chestening and it is a police vehicle. Trustee Shuniman said it is being used by the code enforcement officer. A resident asked if there was any updates on Dollar General, no updates were given. Shuniman made a motion to adjourn, seconded by T. Fish, meeting adjourned at 8:10 PM.
I'll make a motion to approve, do you mind if I come last minute? Second.
Okay, Shuniman on the motion, third step, Kelly on the second. Any further discussion? All of the big guy.
Aye.
Opposed, most carries.
For Marcy, yes, sir. So, the treasure port was, was handed to you guys. The bulk of the work this past month was doing the preparing budgets and I was able to get the general account cleaned up. So I do have a fund balance for that, but I'm gonna get, once we get the actuals in for March, I will provide much better information to you for year end in the April meeting. The other big thing that's going on is the investments. Finally was able to get them to give me the sweep account setup that will allow me to put the investment money into a higher yield account, which will be good. So, yeah, so all in all, the ending balances of your various funds, the general fund has an ending balance, 172,918 dollars. Major street fund has an ending balance of 347,077 dollars, local street 46,6,000 dollars. And then your, well, your sewer fund after liabilities is still has your, you know, your four-year bond has an impact on there. But overall, current assets total, 210, about 250, 250,000. Like I said, a lot of those will be merged into, they will still be separated out from the system because legally we have to, but we will pool those together and gain a decent amount of interest on those since we're all in the same. Coming up this next month, like I mentioned, we'll be trying to align the chart accounts with the Michigan chart accounts and pretty much just come with, with an overall fund balance for all different funds, so. That's what I have. Any questions?
Can I have you? Maybe I'm just not seeing it. So, um, because I know we have the assessment in there, but it's kind of confusing to know what we actually have available in the sewer. Can we have you do it like, I'll keep this off on the side or something, just what is actually there?
Yeah, the numbers that are in black, well, you don't have a colored one, but the ones in parentheses are your negative amounts. Yeah, we can total up what your current assets, it, it will be different once they're pooled into the investment account.
Right, and just, just because it, the way that we've always seen it, it kind of gives us a how much work we've got, you know what I mean? So if we need to make, if, if we need to make moves or something like that, it'd be easier.
Yeah, it's fine, but you know, and, you know, a lot of the accounts will have restrictions on when, what can move where.
Right, right.
So, they're probably separated, except for the investment ones, they're probably separated out to the most granular level they probably can be, but I can certainly give you a total.
Yes, so, please. That's all, I mean, just because it'll help break it down a little bit more, because we've been so used to looking at it with that total balance.
I just would be worried that that would be deceiving because you can't just use those funds like that.
No, 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 we know, yeah, it's just, it's just the way to know, I, I know we, because right now we see negatives, that's all we ever see is a negative. I just wanna know.
Technically, that is your overall position on your sewer, I mean.
Well, yeah, but I'm just saying for the other folks that have asked about it, we need to see both everything, so it is fine. We know we're in the negative for 40 years. I just wanna know, I, I guess I can just, I'll just grab a calculator and do it myself, it's fine. He said he was real good.
I'm just, I'm just wanting to clarify that he's a worthy great soul.
Yes, yes.
He, he cautions for that.
Yeah, I just, it's just one of the questions that have been asked.
Well, that, that's been one of the issues of the past because somebody gave this huge number here, you know, 800,000 dollars in the code. You know, why are we, we're not, that was.
Why, and that's.
We don't want my two, you know, so.
No, and that's fine, and maybe we can just leave it this way so we know and it's not misleading, but I just, I can, I can take that home and add it up.
So, one of the other things that I wanna add on here, because what you aren't seeing on here, and this is part of getting the, the fund balance set up, is you technically have an accounts receivable, which is money that is owed the village based upon the special, the specialism that's attached to every property, right? That's an asset that offsets your, your negative liability. If that was on here, that would give you a, a better, I just, I gotta get that number right, it's, it's not quite right right now, so.
But, yeah.
But you're right, that, if that was on there, that would give you kind of the true view as to what you have for your sewer fund right now.
Yes, yeah, yeah, or whatever you, just something like that would make it.
Yeah, that's.
I'm not trying to be a pain in the butt, I'm not trying to be a troublemaker.
It's not, I just. I just wanna make, I mean, and you guys already know, you know, you, you can't just use your short-term assets or your short-term reserves for just anything, right? It has to be used for certain things, yeah. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Okay, motion by Shuniman.
Second.
Kelly on the second. Any further discussion? All of the big guy.
Aye.
Opposed, most carries.
Oakley Police Department monthly report. From February 1st through February 28th, total police hours worked, 168. Total hours worked for code enforcement was four. One ordinance citation was issued, one ordinance violation letter issued. Traffic stops and citations, nine, eight verbal warnings, one citation, business checks were completed on patrol. Police incidents, vehicle inspection, found and recovered property.
Vetchmore.
Oh, Vetchmore arrest for Oakley, uh, see, Chestening, so you down there, no, assisted Chestening, police department domestic. Assisted Chestening, police department bank fraud, and assisted St. Charles.
I'll make a motion to approve the police report.
Okay, Shuniman on the motion, Kelly on the second. Any further discussion?
I got a question. This code enforcer for the four hours, who is this person?
Dan McClone, has, has anybody seen him?
Uh-uh, why is he not at a meeting just like our police officer? He hates to come to these meetings.
I'll get out.
No, we don't sign.
Well, isn't he supposed to be?
Any other meeting has their chief of police at them.
The officer?
He just said we're supposed to be at the meetings.
They don't have to, the council said.
I do have a question, because last month you guys said that the code enforcement officer was not underneath the police department.
Correct, that's what we told you.
Yes.
And he's on the police officer report?
That's because Mark asked me if he wanted.
What is the right one?
He's not under the police. Mark asked me if he wanted me to still put his hours on here because.
So who pays him, the police or the village?
The village of Oakley pays for him.
Then it should be on a village report, is that not be a fraudulent, correct?
Is it not in payroll on our, our treasurer's report?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I mean, just asking.
But I would think that if, if he's not falling underneath the police report or police, then he shouldn't be on the police report. He should be on another report. This tells me that he's, he's falling underneath the police department.
Is he working as a zoning?
No, that's.
That was key.
That's zoning.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's zoning.
We can do a separate.
That's planning zoning.
Yeah, so we'll just do.
I have a question too, real quick. Why under the agency on the ticket, why, why did he put Oakley Police Department on there if he's code enforcement? Remember last month, you told us it's two, two separate departments? But he's not coming over here as a reserve officer, he's coming over here as a code enforcement, right? No.
If he writes a blank, if he writes a blank ticket, he's code for you.
No, he is a, I don't understand what's so funny. He is a code enforcement officer, which he gets paid for, and he's also a reserve officer.
But when he comes over here, he's not doing that.
I don't think any of the reserve officers have done anything yet.
No.
I'm just saying, he's coming over here as code enforcement, okay?
So we have approved reserve officers then? We have reserve officers?
Yes.
How many, why? Where they from?
Yeah, that's our.
So the last thing we need is to find out we got.
We also want. I don't know what yours still has.
Ford, you got a question?
Yeah.
Thank you.
But our reserves do not get paid either, like we have to keep that in mind. So it's not a bunch of, it's just, they're coming in and they're helping out. Like if we were to have a big function in town, the reserves would come in and just be a second person to be here.
Where do they, how much, how many do I have on the report?
Wait a minute, Ford's got the four to go.
Okay, sorry, Ford's, go ahead.
Okay, I used to be the code enforcement officer, why the hell isn't one of you people doing this? So why are. I discussed this before with you. Code enforcement officers, easy as hell, you drive around, you turn around, you look at people, start to do something. You send them a letter, if they don't do something about it, then you take care of it, is the way it works. Craig Mikey got fined, I understand, I don't know positively. Was that a, in the mail, he got that, or did he get fined for not his property? But why aren't you people doing that? I see five people sitting there, it would take me one hour to do this, I would volunteer to do it for free again for you. It's a once or twice a year issue. Doug Schindorff was the famous president, I wrote Doug Schindorff up, you wonder why? Because I did my job, so I'm asking you people, get rid of this man, do the job yourself. It's not hard, it's not hard.
This is a big part of the village of Oakley right here that's concerned, it's about time you guys started listening to us.
Our voice is serious instead of.
We, you are supposed to work for us.
Exactly.
That's how we, that's why we, you, you guys were here months ago and wanted the code enforcement officer, now we got one, let's get rid of them.
We want, we know. I turned around, was here three months ago, Rich, and asked why one of you people wasn't doing it. I haven't been here for two or three meetings, I brought it up before, told you that I did that job. Why the hell isn't one of you people doing it? Why?
And the issue they had was chickens, and you're not doing it any, the last meeting, you said, well, we don't know where the code enforcement officer is. We haven't seen him, he hasn't logged any hours, that's why we don't have any answers for you. So he's back on staff, what's the update on chickens?
Well, hold on, I want my answer.
Yep.
I want my answer.
I'm not, because I'm not trained to.
What, what do you have to do?
That's what you always do.
Craig Mikey's house, apparently that man was smart enough to tell that Craig had a place and he thought they had to be addressed. You council members speak to each other, you know what needs to be addressed and not addressed. But I mean, I'm not trying to use Craig as an example, but the thing of it is, you can drive down every darn street here, less than an hour, you can do your job. You people talk and if one of you thinks that something should be done, tell the code enforcement officer, the setting up tables right there. Not some man from Chestening coming in here that doesn't know us personally. Let's get some work.
Honestly, I won't do it because if I show up at any of your doors and you act like, say, I'm doing these meetings, I don't wanna do anything. I'd be terrified to speak up to you, so I'd rather have somebody that's done it and knows how to do the legalities of it. Because I can't go to any of you when you're angry and tell you, hey, clean up your damn yard. You can do it. Send a letter.
Okay, let me explain how it works. You drive down the road, you see it, you take the address, you bring it back to the court, she sends a letter to him. You don't knock on the door, absolutely not. First, I personally agree with you 100%, you don't need it.
That was actually in a group, I, I'm a zoning administrator, zoning issues you absolutely have to handle.
You have to handle what?
You can't handle it in person, you can't get it to them in the lab, so.
You can give a warning by letter, so we've signed a warranty, but if they don't do anything about it, then we have to do the citation. And they have to, but when it comes to the point of sending out those citations, we have to have somebody that can do it that's not.
What's the matter with the cop?
Yeah, that's why that got brought up. It was because no one, especially Ferguson, was gonna do the code report. It was because no one, especially Ferguson, was gonna do the code enforcement, that was beneath him.
I don't know, I'm not myself, he's just really not here today.
Well, my talk, Mr. Fish, oh.
So I've, I've got a comment on this also that I'd like to bring up. Sure good.
No answer.
I've been working with Craig somewhat to help work for cleaning it up. Craig, you have a problem, I don't think anybody here in town is, Craig will admit he had a problem, okay? Nobody's sitting here saying there wasn't a problem, there was a problem, I think everybody agrees to that. I just asked Craig if it's okay if I discuss it. He said he had a conversation with you, Rich, and he had a conversation with you. And he said he talked about the fact that it's wintertime and there's only so much he could do, and that you guys would work with him. Then the, the code enforcement showed up there and said he was told to write him a ticket. This is bullshit.
Not communication, or what?
If you guys, I mean, it's a mess, he needs to clean it up, we all, I get it, Rich, I get it, you know. We can, you can talk to this man right here.
I could talk to him on the basis.
So why did you guys send a ticket, send a man over there to ticket him, when he talked to you and you ahead of it, and probably had it worked up?
All he asked me is if you could get it, leave the tractors in the yard, that's what he asked for.
Yeah, and I never got an answer out of Rich.
What'd she tell you, you told me you talked about the winter? Is that what you said, what did you guys talk about?
And I told him to work on what he can at the time, as long as we see improvement, there's something to be, that, I'm sure that we'll do something.
He's only nine thousand pounds worth of scrap.
Well, I pulled almost ninety thousand pounds of scrap off.
And why would they ask anybody in the little, this cold little winter to do that anyways?
This is the spring pajamas I did.
That particular issue is not something that's new, that's not something.
I understand that, I understand that.
It's an ongoing, it's the same thing over and over.
Did you take care of it last year, Rich?
Yeah, I actually did the same thing, noticed this and, but.
I know, they're noise last year.
You said you cleaned it, you were cleaning it up when you came over to my house.
You said you got a notice.
We got a notice in December.
In December I got one.
In December we got a notice.
Right, getting nothing from you prior.
That's in the middle of winter.
Yeah, that'll be this year, the last, it was last year, it's not, it's not, I'm sure, Fuzz, you probably, that was one that you went to, when you were doing the code enforcement, right?
I probably did, he probably got my back then.
Nothing new, you know.
But the thing was, our council was satisfied with the end result, and it's accumulated, so. Okay, so you guys take care of it, but the thing is, take care of it in the springtime, number one. Number two, you said it's an ongoing situation, he's never received the letter from you. Number three, why do we turn around and find the man right away? How much did it cost?
Ninety-five dollars.
Ninety-five dollars you just took out of his pocket. And you could have sent him a letter, you didn't send a letter, is that true?
I'm sure he's got a letter too.
Did you get a letter?
In December.
And what did the ticket come from?
February.
Right, written a license back in the year.
Right after he talked to me, I had proof about it.
Probably troubled me this afternoon.
And who told the cop to give him a ticket?
He told Craig he was told to ticket him.
Yeah, that I couldn't tell you. I mean, I didn't go talk.
I suggest you check with him, man, we wanna know.
What I don't understand is, you're the president, and all we ever hear out of your mouth is, I don't know, or I'm not sure, you know.
I don't deal with the, the police and the, the.
This isn't police, you told us.
I just, I just, everything I said, I just. Everything I said, I just. You just listened to bits and pieces that you wanna hear. I said I did not talk to, you know, just this one and just that one, I, I haven't talked to either one of them, you know, in recent months. I, I, I knew, you know, Craig, because I, I usually, I'd always by, hey, Craig, if you talk to Craig, he's, he's a good, good guy, and he'll work on it, that's how Craig is. Am I right, Craig? I, I've never had a problem, you know, and you, when you come over here and help, or the children come, they're gonna cancel you, because you had the same issue. You know, I'd even go in to help you if I could, but I don't know what I can do, I mean, I can't stop them from coming up.
One thing would help me, one thing's, they are not white. Correct, add up, that's in French, I'm a fourteenth, I'm a gray.
That's a hobby.
And I mean, you're in the town with the biggest tractor shell.
So.
I mean, you're gonna give him help for having tractors.
Tractors or lawnmowers, I know that was an issue that had come up, there, there's lawnmowers lined up and tractors. I, I couldn't tell you, you know. Jim?
I wanna know how many officer, uh, reserve officers we have, or police officers, and where are those reserve officers, we got, we saw?
I believe we just have the, the one right now.
Two, one, we read, we had.
I was saying some.
Oh, yes, right.
Is he still here? They're both, I know they're both out of Chesney, and they work with, I think they're reserves through Chesney and.
Who else?
I wanna say Saint Char.
Chesney.
Ch- just Chesney. Just Chesney, right?
Nobody seems to know what's going on in our village.
There's a whole bunch of information on it, and I just asked Jen if she could pull it up, like, we have all of that information from previous meeting. I don't know everybody's name and everybody's where.
Who writers and fighters in this village?
Off the top of my head.
Do you hire fighters in this village?
Well, we all do, we're the council, we make decisions.
Who's ahead of this council, this village?
The, the council are the ones that.
Who's ahead of it?
Well, he does, he's just here to run the meetings, he doesn't make the decisions, the council that is the four people in the seats beside him and Jen are. He doesn't tell me to do a damn thing, I do what I'm supposed to do. You guys bring stuff to us, we make motions.
Should he not know who police officers we have within the village?
He knows, he knows the same information as I do, we don't have everybody's full name, birthday, address, and something.
I don't, we do have the office. You should know that these have questions.
So you want me to have everybody in this honest council's folder, addressing everything, I don't have everybody's personal information. I only need to know when they're on duty and what their names are, that's it.
I do not deserve to be talked to like that.
How are you gonna scream at her and then get mad when she reacts?
Please ask your question.
How many reserve officers does Oakley have, and how many police officers?
We have one police officer, that was Mark, and then we do have two reserves, because we have the, the code enforcement gentleman, um, and I think he has two reserves, and then, um.
What is Mark's job?
Because we are a small enough community where you probably know these people, right?
Yeah, we're similar.
There's two, we probably know their names and. That's all, that's all, no, it's Brandon. Brandon, that's what, but I, that's the only information I know, is their name and that they live in Chesney, and that's what I said three times. But everybody wanted me to, I don't know, give out their children's names and stuff too, so I'm sorry. I know Brandon is Indian, they're both in Chesney, and they both, I know, Dan or Brandon is also a reserve for Chesney.
Talk about a scary person.
No.
You're gonna have to speak up, Mr. Fish, I cannot hear you.
All right, I gotta go back to Mr. Bill.
No, we still have public comments.
Is this the public comment yet?
I was just trying to allow some people to, to, to come in that, kind of relevant to what we're talking about, so I gotta go back to what we have at hand here.
To charge your audience, as we can tell.
That, that's fine, that's fine.
And why does it happen when people come up with this? And why, why does it happen when people come with this, it's because they're not pleased with the community leaders? Just one project they voted on, bingo, so. We voted on which, you make the. Yeah, Kelly seconded it, I don't know if it's called another one.
I don't, it wasn't. This is our meeting.
There's a motion by Schuman, seconded by Kelly, all of them bear to that.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, DPW wastewater, uh, DPW, the biggest project here again is, is Water Street, finished up yesterday, not yesterday, yeah. Yesterday on the, uh, drains. And the final walkthrough on the, uh, design element from the engineering department, the biz are expected to go out the end of this month with that project. Water Street. Wastewater map, I've too much going on there, uh, going away on parts, started a discharge process, completely, and so already started. So far, some of it on that.
Have they, have they said anything more about the contract? For Kennedy's? Uh, no, for basically with order of parts, we entered a contract.
Yeah, I'm in discussion with them. All right, guest speaker to public comment on the current agendas that we've already gone to.
Good, I'd like to know where exactly Water Street ends.
Okay, I can show you when it comes down there.
Would you please?
Yep.
Because I'll show you that you're wrong.
Oh, no.
And if you're not wrong, I want the paperwork showing that you're not wrong, because I'm going to sue my title company.
You got my ears, what's going on?
Huh?
What's going on? On Water Street.
It seems as though all the maps have changed since I purchased my property.
I imagine that.
That's now.
And they now cross over my yard.
Apparently you made a complaint to the village and now they're having.
No, I've never said anything. However, s- my yard wants to be paved over, and I'm now alone, it's not gonna happen. I own that property, yeah, and you're not gonna pay it over.
You're a piece of law, damn it.
No, I don't care, if somebody wants to use it for a driveway, that's fine, they can use it for a driveway, I got no problems with that. My problem is when you pave over it, it's gonna create a racetrack. And I don't want a racetrack, I don't want my street, it's a dead end for a reason.
Right behind you, that primary.
So, yeah, please do that.
Yeah. Now, that, that's trying to be too hard, I, I think I even got a current map of your situation over there, um, because there is a, uh, wastewater right away to there too, or, um.
Who bought that? And from who did they buy it from?
Uh, I believe it probably offered consumers, because they own the right away for the power line to go through your yard there too.
How can, um.
I don't know, I can.
I'll, I'll discuss it with you later.
It's been a while since I've looked at that map, but, uh, as far as paving goes, it won't even come with ten hundred fifty forty a light.
I, I just don't need my taxes going up anymore, I can't afford what it is now.
Is it Fuzz?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna come up there. Where's all this stuff? Where's our four trucks, our skid, skids, our four-wheel drive vehicle?
We'd all like to know.
This is all ten thirty-three stuff.
Yeah, dealer's garage are over here.
We'd all like to see it.
The, uh, the cat trailer, students, that's it. It's good that the everybody is the right here.
Where's the four-wheel drive vehicle?
In the regular garage there.
Okay, where's the all three four-wheel drive vehicle?
It's right next to it.
Okay. I can see all this stuff if I wanna see it.
Yes.
Every bit of it, how come this stuff isn't in the minutes that, uh, Mark's been picking up stuff from the ten thirty-three program? I mean, I get looking at this stuff, I have to ask myself, what the hell are we doing with all this stuff? So, here's my guess, my guess is, most of this stuff's probably been sold, you have to hold it for one year, right?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't sold this stuff.
You have it sold now since two thousand thirteen? Well, look, if you go back to two thousand thirteen, I mean, this thing is loaded with trucks.
Well, some of that stuff went back already to the, the military too, that is, it was.
If it's on that list, it's not, it hasn't gone back.
I don't know about that.
The guns stay on that list until they are returned. So, whatever year it says, that's the year they were received here, that means they're still here. Those only go off the list once they return them.
Yeah.
That other property, the other property there is an actual updated one, I update it every day.
Yeah.
Okay, that stuff is supposed to be here, the stuff that's missing has been sold.
Well, the thing is, you don't have enough buildings to put all this stuff in, Rich, you don't have enough buildings.
Storage containers.
This is, I mean, you ain't got enough buildings to put all this stuff in, so, I, I just asked the question, where is it? And also, I'm only taking a wild guess here, because, correct me if I'm wrong, I was not at the last meeting, but someone was saying about a truck, and somebody says, oh, that's Mark's truck?
Mark's money.
Mark's money.
I said sell the truck to pay for the valve.
It, no, it goes to the police department.
That, it's.
Somebody said.
I have it recorded on here that one of you people up there said that's Mark's money, not.
I didn't say Mark's money, I told you it has to go to the general.
I will send you the video.
Go for it and ask me, I think you didn't survive, the police department goes to the general fund and the police.
That's what you're saying now.
I'm assuming, I mean.
You know what, you need to show it to me, because don't tell me I'm a liar when I ain't a liar.
Okay, you're a liar.
We heard him.
No, no, how is he gonna sit there and call me a liar?
Like this, you're a liar.
From the police department, it goes into the general fund, into the police budget, we cannot spend it on O and M, which is what you said last month, you said, let's spend it, because we wouldn't have to spend thirty thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars to Kennedy's. We could sell that truck.
Sell the truck.
And send it, I said, no, that is general fund money.
No.
You said that was Mark's.
That was Mark's money, that's what you said, so you're the liar, congratulations, stand up.
He doesn't remember what you said.
Okay.
I know what I said.
So do we.
So does this.
So do I, because I have it recorded too.
We're all witnesses of what he said.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm assuming that this stuff is getting sold, going into the general fund, this is what's paying for our police department?
That, that does the intention eventually of the.
You're going back to two thousand and what, thirteen here?
Those don't really count.
Don't they?
No.
Okay, because they're on the list, but you're selling stuff. You have receipts for the stuff that's sold?
Yes.
Is there tax being collected for the stuff being sold?
Like state tax?
Yeah.
Sales tax.
I would like to see all the receipts, and I wanna see the five blocks.
They're here within the village by, because they can't be sold.
So, this is how the police department is being funded, correct? Selling this stuff, putting it in the general fund, in the police budget.
Answer that very carefully, Fish.
I just said, twice now, both times you've been here, so.
It's being, it's being funded by that?
That's how I ask him, that's my question.
It's just going, the money is just going into the general fund as of this point.
And then going into the police budget, that's my question.
Well, it's all one budget, the police department budget is in the general fund.
You guys just done the budget, they're line items, correct?
Yeah.
What's the police budget, you guys just done your budget.
Is it a police budget or is it a general fund?
It's all in the general fund.
It's a department under the general fund.
Correct.
The police is basically funded by the general fund.
Correct.
If that one, if there's.
I wanna, I wanna know what the budget of the police department for the year is, until next spring.
Well, that's, I need to add up the department, you know, you're looking for salaries.
You just done the budget tonight?
I know, but it's, it's all, it's in different departments, I can get the answer, it'll take me a few minutes, that's all.
Okay.
Okay, because we all wanna know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We wanna know, what is the police department budget, that's what we all know. And all-terrain vehicle four-wheel drive, is that a Jeep?
It's like a, like a quad.
It's a Polaris quad.
Okay.
It's seven hundred or something.
Because I see an all-terrain vehicle here also, how many do you have?
I believe it's two, one that, the one is, this is all scrap, like, I want to pull the tires off it, put, put one together.
Okay. So, the other question I have, while you're looking up the police budget, sir? How much liability coverage does the police department have through the insurance? How much liability coverage does the police department have through the insurance company policy?
I'll do a bit, but I don't know.
Okay, that's a pretty, pretty big question. So the police department, reserves as you call them, did you people vote, how many people, did you incident minutes that you voted to hire them?
I know Brandon was one of them to vote on, I remember him coming in. That then.
Was it as a reserve officer or flight officer?
No.
Reserve.
Okay, and what about for flight officer, did you hire him through the powerful here as a motion?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, cause, um, I was actually against the idea of having a code enforcement officer, but I'll just tell it to you.
On the reserve officers, did you take new applications and do background checks?
Yes.
Yeah.
Did a good job of background checking Mark.
Mark, please, no.
Thanks, guys.
Get an excellent job there. Am I turn?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a floor?
Yep.
Yes, sir, no, do I have the floor?
Is that after an agenda?
Well, it, we'll have.
We're not at, okay, nevermind, I'm not.
There's, there's two questions, but I, I would like.
I asked to pretend with everything you've been discussing, sir, I guarantee you. You people are talking about code enforcement officers, you're talking about officers that you're paying for. I have a daughter, three grandchildren that just moved to this town. You all have sat here and told me what their jobs are, your code enforcement, Mark Ferguson? We talked a few days ago, didn't we? Did we? Yes or no?
Just said yes.
I want you to fucking answer so they can hear you.
Hey, 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 whoa.
Watch your language, please.
Alright, I'll try to hold back.
Yes, please.
Yeah, we'll try. Well, your police officer seems to wanna go around harass people like you've had complaints. My daughter is being harassed by your police officer. Are you guys listening?
Yes.
I'm gonna give you driver's education. He's harassing her because of yield sign down here by the church. We discussed this, haven't we?
No, I'm turning on.
Don't fucking say, excuse me, I'm sorry, don't say no. He's harassing her because she's not performing a proper yield stop. Mind you, there's a lot of traffic down there at that corner. You know, there's a lot of traffic in this town. Stoplights everywhere, right?
Amen.
Okay. Take that now with a grain of salt, right? I had enough, I've heard enough of him, I've heard enough from people. I'm gonna give you a little bit of background of me. Alright? If you take this highway and you go this way, you go two miles that way, and you go two miles that way, that land is all related in family. So everywhere Mr. Mark Ferguson seems to be riding around the countryside, our phones ring off the hook, why is he out riding around in the country?
Uh-huh, getting married.
He's supposed to be right, you know, I can hit a golf ball, I honestly got one into this village, north, south, east and west. Why is he out riding around? By our properties? Why?
Looking for extracurricular.
Are we looking for a little extracurricular what? Now here, listen, my point a little bit more. We had a big rainstorm.
That too.
Four or five nights ago, right? Got an inch of rain, you can't forget it, come on, what's the biggest one we just had? I set him up. I had enough of his shit, I've heard enough.
Thank you.
So I goes there with the truck and my grandkids, turn on the lights like everything's normal. What happened? What happened, I'm asking, I told you.
You told me you pulled it, you were, you were at the house, he pulled the driveway, he said, do his water come out the side of your house? And you told him to get the fuck out of the yard or.
There ain't no water coming out of the house, he come over there after dark because of my good-looking daughter. That's his purpose and intent. He doesn't come over there at seven o'clock at night, this is before the time change and it's dark. Women are relaxing, they're making dinner for their kids. Your officer, your police officer comes up to bang on the door, well, guess who answers? It ain't the good-looking girl, is it? Is it? And you guess what, he coughed up some cotton balls. He's not here to witness his guilty fucking act, excuse me, I'm sorry, if you try to defend him, you got some bad morals. And anybody else, if you got protection against this kind of activity, you got bad morals and you got a bad cop. I let my guard down one time in my life, a year and a half ago. I let a guy go, he was a friend of my dad's. My dad died, he put my mom in the hospital. I'm not gonna let a, a premeditated, whatever you wanna call your cop. He's not being a cop. You get it figured out, cause you know what? I'm gonna be hiring her lawyers. And you know who they are. They know the zip code and they don't even need to let a stamp, cause they know all of it. Anybody else?
Yep.
I'm done. And it's like I told you, I guarantee you, and it's like, everybody can hear me. If I tip them on that property or my property after dark, the first thing coming out that door is this right here.
So you better know.
So, you got a call.
Cause otherwise.
If you want my history, ask her. She can ask her husband and he can tell you.
Thank you.
If this ain't enough to put that guy, if you don't ask for his resignation, and he ain't out of here in a week. I guarantee you, every woman, let me face, every woman in this town that has any kind of interference with this guy, and I can call it two in the morning, three in the morning, I don't care. I'm retired, now I got time.
Oh, it's already starting.
You're the president, you answer to everything.
Yes.
I've been a president in a lot of stuff, the buck starts there, pal.
The cop needs to go.
The cop needs to go, we've been coming here for years, thank you.
Well, maybe they didn't have enough ammunition, but I guarantee you, he's premeditated.
We're done.
That's all he's doing, he's riding around pulling people hoping they're a pretty little girl to play with. That is his purpose and intent. That's why he's not here. If he wasn't guilty, he'd be right here. Just like I'd be.
Yes, sir.
If you're accusing me of this stuff and I'm not, by God.
As a man of the law, he should know how to do it.
Alright.
One thing, one thing.
For me, yeah. Do I decide my side?
You're on your side.
Hey, 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 hold on a minute, let me have it, let me finish it. You knew when you hired him that he perjured himself on seventeen drug cases down in Oakland County.
I'll tell you.
He came up here.
Yep.
He came up here, wrote a fraudulent ticket to my husband, which your family members are now getting sued for. And you twice, because you hired him.
You've been warned.
Your family members, you are on.
Warned and warned and warned.
Your family members, Jonathan Denning, Gina Fonda Cowarder, to start with. And you, like I said, twice, because you hired him and you knew. You also put the women and children in this facility, in this village, in danger by having your pedophile family member working for this village. That is unacceptable. Get him out of here, or you are gonna be end, end up paying the price in court. I'm done.
She's serious, sir.
If Mark's not done, I'm very serious, we will see you in court.
And I was just gonna say to you, sir.
Talk to him soon, and.
Ask the village.
Talk to him soon.
Ask the village who supports this officer.
Nobody but you five.
Nobody.
You guys will do, I wanna know why. Yeah. Why?
What does he do for you?
He's got a good following, bring him in here, I wanna meet him.
I've got an officer.
Take him better than he is.
I got an officer willing to take his spot with a clean record.
Why do you insist on keeping that cop? Why? What's he doing?
Paying you something?
It doesn't have to just, you even have dinner with him in uniform.
Just like Russ Nicky?
I'm asking for him to get rid of, first, but really, we need to get rid of Fish.
Yep.
Because.
Yeah.
You are, you, you led us through all the way to prison for Russ Nick, and now you're gonna sit back and watch us? No, it's like you have a predatory thought, looking for a woman on the job.
Yeah.
We, we had Rich, and Rich was a stalker, Russ Nick was a stalker, and now it looks like we have number three. And if you wanna keep him as your officer, you are the one who should be impeached.
I don't know.
Answer.
Are you guys, why aren't you guys riled up like that, man? You guys, I hear you guys up here, you don't want to be yelled at, you don't like.
He's sitting there like a blank stare.
Father, every one of you guys know the cost, the reality, the dangers that he's talking about. And you let it happen, you are allowing it, you just sit there and you just wipe it off your shoulder.
Fathers and mothers shame on you.
That's the kinda man that I was raised by, and that's really sad that you guys are sitting, you've got two women, up, three women up here, and I don't, I see.
Lays there, shame on you.
I don't care, that's, that's your basis, I don't care, why aren't you guys riled up like that man, or a man you employ?
Cause they don't care.
You employ him, and why aren't you that, I, Fish, I wanna know why. I don't even trust you on my mind, dude, if I have to call you.
Exactly.
If I have to call you because of the sewer or something, you're the man who we have to call, we have to stop conducting health, Fish, but I don't even trust you on my mind to do your job. Because you employ three really bad people to watch over this town, I don't feel safe.
I protect the right to them, children, again.
My children don't, I, I don't even, it's, it's not the same as my brother, and you just, you're just okay with it.
It's calm, it's calm, it's calm.
But look at me in the face all of you and tell me why, why aren't you guys fighting for better? When we, we are sitting here saying, we are like really scared of this cop, he's a predator, and he's friends with a predator, and that predator was friends with his first predator, they're all connected from Kerry, they're all connected.
Yes, sure.
They're sickles, sickles, sickles.
I remember my period.
And you just let him in your town.
I was there.
You let him have a way in this town, and he is, I would take his threat seriously. Cause he's really, he, that's a man willing to risk it all for this village.
I'm about ready to go myself again, I'm about ready to take that road down there again, I, I'm about ready to go again, I'm all sick of that place.
Don't you guys have anything, you're just like, you guys are just up there, you just don't see the.
Just, yeah.
And you're like, you're a dangerous man with a badge, and you guys just.
You shouldn't even.
We're already, you're out.
I have a question, I have a question.
They're not gonna let me talk.
Yeah.
I, I was.
They're the only ones here who they wanna hear.
I would like to be answered.
No, you guys don't wanna hear what we're hearing.
Let's hear it.
Let's hear it.
Why do we keep Rich Fish as our question? And why do we keep, yeah, right.
Why do we keep Rich?
Why am I still having him? You wanna go down this road again, you wanna take those people of Oakley through this path again, Rich?
I don't.
All the way, all the way to Rich, when Mark was the person, let him finish.
I'm sorry, it's, well, answer, please.
I have no reason, I have any reason to believe that Mark is any kind of predator or any other BS that, that like.
That's not BS.
No, I'm talking to her.
Okay.
If for a minute I did, I'd be the first one to be on it. The first one. Now let me tell you what happened to me, because I got two grandkids that can't go to the park anymore, they're scared to death because they had an old guy hauling them around with their phone in this area.
Oh, my bad, I got thrown out of car.
That's why you're getting sued, because you guys lied and it was dismissed.
Please don't deep slap.
I'm not deep slapping, I, I deal with the same thing.
First, first.
Let me finish, I had the same thing, I, you know, what, what do you, you know, cause I don't know people, you know, I don't know every, everybody can have secrets, you know what I'm saying? I, that you don't know more. But.
But we know Russ Nick's not good.
But I also know I got a camera showing a guy staring in the bedroom window of my son's house, and my granddaughters are screaming.
Okay.
So who is that?
Where's your cop?
I got Mark for that, but everybody else got you saying, oh, how.
So you just said, you have no reason to believe that Russ Nick did these things that we're saying is, what do you have to say for that very energetic cry for help from you? From that man that just walked out, Mr. Sutton?
Calm that bullshit.
What, what do you have to say for that, so you've heard a complaint? I witnessed this, you know, within, within the last decade, I've seen people go and put a written complaint about the department, and those disappear. So I'm asking you not to allow that to happen this time, because I watched it, and you know what I'm talking about, where people have to jump through hoops, just to be heard about their complaints, and they're valid complaints. And it's not about police, it's about a specific bad police. So what are you, so you heard him, what are you going to do about this?
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna, I wasn't gonna say, but I'll tell you what I did do, I have already been in contact with the Michigan State Police.
Okay.
To, to assist me.
Okay.
Yeah, as the village president, not in individual capacity.
Okay.
As the village president, that's what I've done.
And what did the state police say?
Well, at this point, it would be, it would be.
Okay, well that's.
Not good for me to talk, I mean.
Assist you what, in getting rid of him?
No.
What's your intentions of doing with him?
I, 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 I really can't say, all I'm telling you is, I cover my, my butt, the bill, as the village president, you know, and the village, that's what I have done.
Kathy Kelly, do you like Mark, that Russ Nick as your police officer?
Yes, I asked him last.
Kathy Kelly, do you like Mark Ferguson as your police officer?
I think he's fine.
Did you like Mark, Rob Russ Nick as your police officer?
I can't hear him very.
Did you like Rob Russ Nick as your police officer? He was fine too. Finding out your protest that it hits him on the street out here when, when you're, how about you guys, you like Mark Ferguson?
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
They all said.
So first thing happened, because he had some threats, and I believe that man, I believe that man, and I wouldn't even know if our police department's insured, cause those are.
Right, I want, I want to know, are we insured and who insured us?
And that man has threatened you, and he want.
These are attacks.
The choice is now in your lap to take care of this problem. And the idea that even though you don't see, you don't see that there's a problem, if someone feels scared, that's abuse. If she feels, if that woman feels threatened or scared, it is abuse.
Because you're scared?
Yes, yes.
Because of what he put us through, if he pulls me over, I'm calling state police and a sheriff, cause I'm not getting out of the car with that weird guy.
Kathy, it's different than being like, um, nervous or anxious, it's that, it's the fact that she feels she's being stalked and harassed, and that's fearful, that's abuse. That's not fair.
Definitely.
That is not fair, and you've seen that man, he is serious.
He, he is serious, you know what I told him when I, he first came to me, I, I was appreciating, he is actually the first person in this town, well, maybe with the exception of Fuzz, has ever come to me and said anything about anybody or any issue. Of the first, the first, I was like, I told him, I said, you're, you're throwing a scare in the hell out of me, cause I've never had anybody come, hey, you know, Rich, we got a problem, or I think we got a problem, or I see a problem. Not one person has ever come to me, like, with the exception of Fuzz.
I didn't say anything to you in October?
I haven't said anything.
We've come up with experience with series back in, but, no, Fuzz Kostky and, and this gentleman, the first time I'd ever met him, I, I've seen him before, you know, he's been around forever, but I didn't know who he was. And second person in my life in Oakley that's ever actually come to me and said something, and talked in decent manner, the only thing is, you know, and I know he was upset, because the other thing he failed to mention, he was talking about the stop sign or yield sign. That whole part, he forgot to tell me that part. Cause that's what I've, it, it's, now it's starting to come together, did Mark, cause I, the first thing I questioned Mark was, how many times have you come in contact with that? I called the Blue Hawk because I, I didn't know, you know, their names. I know the guy that owns it, but, I said, how many times have you come in contact, I said, well, he said, we had to, I told him, he got slow it down. And then in second time, he said, I went by there and, uh, we had, the, the water was coming out, the, we got these pipes coming down, and it was coming up, decided, and he said, I stopped, knocked on the door to tell him, and he started screaming, get the fuck out of the property. That's, you know, so, and, you know, I was doing my job, and I would've done the same thing, you know, and in that situation, like, with the water thing, I mean.
Somebody's gutter in that, or David Todd at night, seven o'clock at night?
I, I think I did check.
A single woman with babies?
He's not, that's not a police officer's job.
There's three cars.
Anyway.
Whatever. Okay. Okay.
See, you just put your hand up, because you don't wanna hear the problems.
I don't want to keep.
We're trying to explain to you what I'm talking, Glenn. Well, this is off the subject, but it's not off the subject. I wanna tell you something that happened when our son Jordan died. Of course, we had to call the police to come, you know, they come, all right. He come in the door, and he marched himself right back to the bedroom, Jordan was still laying there dead, because he had an arterial heart disease that nobody knew about. So, he come walking, went in the bedroom where Jordan was, which is fun, came back out and shut the door. Of course, Ken and I were there first, cause we found him. His mother, Jordan, I'm Jordan's stepmother, his, I, he was in my life since he was three. Jordan's biological mother came, and Mark would not let her go in the bedroom where her son was, because he said it's a crime scene, and that door's gonna stay closed. And then, he proceeded to go out into the kitchen, opened the cupboards and looked in, opened the freezer, looked through the refrigerator, and didn't say a word about what he was doing. That was completely, you do not tell a mother with her son laying there dead that they can't come in that room and see him? It's a crime scene, did you hear about it being a crime scene? No, you probably didn't, because the only people that know that that happened, Ken's dead now, so he didn't, he couldn't tell you about it. These guys know, because they were there.
Kenny told me.
Kenny told me too.
Yeah, that is a, I'm sorry, but you gotta get on Mark's ass, you don't handle people that way.
No, the, the way he handled it is wrong, what he.
Absolutely.
So, you didn't know about it?
Thank you.
No, actually, um, and I understand, you know, I under, I, I've been there many times. And as a medic, I've, I've been a medic many years.
I know.
And, and one of the things that I had to do, and it happened the same thing, because of Jordan's age. The first thing you wanna do, and you're hoping, and that's what you're looking for, um, the refrigerator, hoping he's a.
Was he trying to find something?
Hoping he's a diabetic, a reason to, to, why, why.
No.
No.
I'll tell you exactly why he did that.
No.
Because Jordan OD'd, he had an opioid addiction that was caused from two surgeries on his shoulder being done wrong.
I'm aware of that too.
Okay, he OD'd, and so Mark right away assumed that he was a drug dealer, or that it was drug related, and that's exactly what he alluded to. That is a bunch of crap.
I've done.
That kid was never, ever a drug dealer.
I've done a lot of in-home deaths in my nursing career as a hospice nurse, and when an officer comes in, he's to sign off, and that's it. They don't search the home. They don't ever disrespect the families, but I, her was atrocious.
I'm sorry, but I just had to look that up.
I know.
That was so wrong.
It's how you handle it, it makes a big difference, I know. Okay, we gotta get back to village business here.
Well, I'm just saying, I think Mark needs.
You got a whole bill?
Mark needs to be gone, I'm sorry.
You've got a whole bill.
Did you close public comment?
We're not at, we're on public comment, I current agenda.
Well, I was asking, add questions yet?
I have another, I have, now, can I finish, tell this one to you? All right, another one, Mark's wonderful things that he's done for us. Our neighbor across, and I'm not gonna mention names, was burning plastic out behind, out in his backyard. The fumes were coming over to us. I have had lung cancer, I could not stand those plastic fume, it was burning plastic, coming over. We called Mark, and guess what Mark said? I wish you would, this person talking to Kenny, I was standing right there, I wish you two would kiss and make up. And he laughed, and he laughed.
Pretty professional.
What's wrong with this picture?
Person's got a medical attention.
That was really absolutely out of line, so then what does he do? He puts that little fence up, puts a little fire ring behind it, and he was still burning crap. He walked away from it one day, and it burned all the way, that we've called Mark, Mark just, he wants nothing to do with that situation. And I'm concerned, I think that, you know, that was a valid thing. And he should've said something to him about it, not try to tell Ken to go kiss, kiss and make up with him. How stupid is that? I think you guys should kiss and make up. What? Sorry, that's.
Oh, be sorry.
I'm done, I just think Mark's a, you did, you need a different police officer.
Yes, you do. You got the man, you got the one on the B twenty four, working behind the counter, I've seen him there, when he was screwing the woman there, the married woman, that was pretty tacky.
In the cemetery.
In the cemetery.
In the bar.
Yeah, and then, also, he hung out at Chuck's for three or four hours, the hardest place for, I sat right there watching. Walked over there and said, don't you have a job to do? I didn't know he hired him for PR work. You know, I could be, I could be that all day long, I got a mouth on me, that guy needs to go.
How about the certification for, you know, some impeachment, and so.
Okay.
Ask you.
But, but.
Okay, I'm gonna change the subject a little bit. On the marijuana building over here, did the taxes, the assessor, did that all get straightened out?
Yeah.
Okay, who receives the tax papers? Who owns the property?
Really owns the property.
Did you get the taxes?
No.
No, she's, I think she said April before we received.
April, wow.
The taxes, where we go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying what she told.
Okay, next question is, when the sewer was put in over there, did you do that out of kindness of your heart, or did they pay the village for equipment rental, pipe, labor?
I did it up to the, up to the building for them. They had their plumbers, well, they've had their plumbers come out, but I went up to that where they, plumbers had come out.
Had no charge?
Right.
Okay, what about the trailer down here, did you hook that sewer up also on the corner across the street from you?
I dug the tap in, yeah.
Was there any charge for that, to hook that up?
No.
You done that for free also?
Yeah.
I paid a thousand bucks to get my tube hooked up.
Yeah, that's fine.
Do you get paid by the hour, hourly pay, and you by the hour while you're doing this for the rest?
What do you get paid for wastewater? For running the wastewater plant, what's your salary, what do you get paid?
Three hundred eighty-seven dollars a month.
For wastewater, that's usually an hourly charge, and his husband was a wastewater lagoon supervisor. He put in for your, the job here, and that's usually an hourly position, where you have to go off, cause you have to walk your boat, and you have to do the lagoons, and do the water. So, how many hours do you get paid for your three hundred and sixty-eight, is that a month, is that a week, is that two, every two weeks? It's not a year, so, don't blow smoke up our, I'd say more.
That's hard on a month.
He said it was a month.
The three hundred and sixty-eight dollars a month?
I'm highly educated, you are in wastewater.
I never said I was educated, Rich.
You said you knew all about wastewater.
I said my ex-husband was a wastewater operator, I know quite a bit about it. Doesn't make you the jack of all trades like you.
Three hundred and eighty-seven a month is what I get paid.
Three hundred and eighty-seven a month?
Minus taxes.
Rich?
Yeah.
I'm gonna protect you this time.
No.
You guys can get mad at me, but I'm gonna tell you what, I talked to you years ago, if you've been teaching anybody what you know, the answer was no. Okay, I talked to Rich Wheeler, which a lot of people in here know, he used to work over at Morris, same thing you're doing right here. People, don't worry about Rich, what he's charging you, believe me. Rich Wheeler would not do this for less than eight hundred dollars a month, and no, nobody else will either.
No, that's fine.
Mark, my word, is it's dirt cheap.
That's fine, but I mean.
Well, we need somebody for a backup.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Somebody in this town needs to start learning, because if we don't get somebody in this town to learn, but Rich knows that that sewer, that lagoon, we're gonna pay dearly to put somebody out here.
We gonna be at it.
So.
I mean, being a good steward of the community, being a good planner, being a president, yeah, we need, we need.
We need backup.
I mean, it just, that makes sense.
Uh-huh.
I mean, it's, it's, you're doing a chief, I mean.
Where is that two days cover?
No.
No. And, and here's, here's my problem.
I didn't bring it up to, uh.
Pete, I'm pardon, please.
Thank you.
Here's my problem. Janine will write this article, all the motion, all the, I don't know, all the, and, and all the people that, that even, I have started to learn the different jobs, or the gentleman that was gonna put this person for absolutely nothing but the cost, told me to kiss his ass, because he ain't getting involved in this pissing village, because of all the bullshit stories.
These stories.
Gay stories.
They're not stories.
These are the people, these are the people that we live in, they're begging you.
So, who are you calling a liar?
For years.
Begging you. You have a.
I'm still waiting for the video, remember, anybody seen Facebook, we have a video of Mark in the park banging some girl. Not one damn person come up with that video yet. You would think that would be the first thing they posted, you know what I mean?
What happened to our, what happened to the Russ Nick cameras that were put on the village?
You know what, Reverend, it's true or not? Mark needs to.
Yeah.
Right. Now that Mark knows he's been seen.
That's what I bought my cable, you, you're, every month, you're, you're burning all these bridges, that, that, anybody that wants to do anything, anybody that wants to come to work here, won't do it now.
No, they won't. Don't do that. Get rid of the idiot. Don't blame the community for your lack of.
He wants to get rid of.
Oh, my God. It's because you guys won't get rid of the idiot. Yeah, my son applied for the, the, the job that little Tony Fish got.
Three months after you started.
No, it doesn't matter, Rich, it doesn't matter. Why don't people, what, where's the wastewater? Why don't you guys put out for that, why don't you do street maintenance, why don't you guys do something? We don't even take care of the veterans memorial here in the park anymore. What, can we, can we at least do that? We, we, we want you guys to act on us, the community, the community that wants this town to get better, not worse.
He's not listening.
This was a little town with a big heart, now it's a little town with a fucked up community. Guys, are supposed to be acting on our best behalf.
I'm sorry, it's not normal.
And yes, you take it as we're angry at you, it's that cop that we don't.
We're angry at Mark, and we're angry that you guys are allowing this bad behavior to continue.
It's not that we hate any of you, we just don't want Mark.
You're, you're seeing everybody in this audience at their worst, to be honest with you, because we're all fed up.
Right.
We're all tired, we're all tired of hearing the lies, the stories, the cover-ups, and, and this goes back to, I mean, you guys allowed Russ Nick. What did it cost you in lawsuits and losses because of the four decisions that were made there? I mean, it was hundreds of thousands of dollars of village money, right? No, there was no losses?
Municipal insurance money.
Oh, so the insurance paid.
But we lost the insurance company, remember that happened?
Well, because Russ Nick has been.
And Fish, mark my words, we are going down that road again, because of that ticket, if you don't get rid of Mark.
We don't wanna be the laughing stock anymore, that's all. Yeah, you say you live in Oakley, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I.
That's the little town that had the two hundred cops, right?
Yeah.
That's what I hear, that's. Kid Rock was a cop there, right? Yeah, well, we're headed back that way again, and that's why everybody.
And we need to be better than that.
Time for a push.
Yep. That's what, here we come.
I think you make people happy, and therefore you would just get rid of Mark.
That's it?
Because the rest of the job, maybe we'll be a little critical of you, we're all very critical of you keeping Mark.
Yes, yeah.
Exactly.
That's why the pressure's on.
The people in here, exactly.
Cause we haven't forgot, we have not forgot Russ Nick, and the people, it's not everybody here that was there during this time with this council, but the lack of trust comes from the past, the past council, our current president, supporting a really bad man, and we haven't forgotten. We're still mad, and President Mark Ferguson, sorry, is his buddy, and he's not doing a good job, and we're really unhappy, and we're still angry. And we don't trust, we don't trust, we don't trust, we don't feel comfortable. This young lady over here is, feels like she's being harassed. You've lived it, let's do better.
What's up, man?
I'm hopeful that we can do better.
What scares me is that.
I'm probably gonna put this in state police, I hope we have something to follow up with that, because I'm gonna come on you to make a change.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For my future children, cause this could be a place, a great place, a great family, but I am uncomfortable. And I haven't forgot, and I haven't forgot what you stood and supported also, and that's, it goes deep. And like he said, we're all at our worst because we get hurt.
You know where we all lie? We're all here together because we want this to be a better place. We know it can be other place. I look around, and all the upset people, including the people up there, we all want it to be better, every one of us. We're all, I know you guys feel like you're getting attacked, I mean, you're, you're on the front line, I get that. We're not happy.
And you're getting the brunt of it because you're hanging out to somebody we all don't want. And we don't understand, why are you hanging out to that person?
Is there a contract, is he a player?
He's not well.
Everybody's not well.
Everybody's not well anymore, so he can easily let go today.
I didn't know. But there was some questions about.
You know, if you're in the trust business, you have to have the, but we trust, and he doesn't have it.
And plus, you know, and he don't wanna be here either, he's, he wouldn't, yeah, he's gonna be here staying, he's uncomfortable too, right?
Must be.
I mean.
Yeah, cause he, you know.
I mean, yeah, so he's not even here to.
You walk past him, drops his head.
It's weird, you guys.
It's something weird in this whole town.
It's so weird.
I would, I would have to believe, and there was a question brought up about the proximity of the police officer and where they live, for a rapid response, if it was.
He's not there.
Why don't we get, look for somebody local, trust me.
You know, you were. He's that hard.
Thirty miles, fifteen miles or something, so they can be an on-call type of person, and, and, you know, he doesn't have to drive an hour, hour and a half to get here, if we need to split up his hours or whatever. I don't know what he, I don't know how he gets a hundred and sixty-eight hours a week or whatever he records, because, I mean, he's, he spends two or three hours a day probably at Rans. I don't know how much time he spends at the post office, is this, what do, what is his job? What is he deemed he's supposed to be doing? Bullshitting with these people, is that what we spend our tax dollars to do?
Yeah, a hundred and sixty-eight hours.
Well, according to his report, for last month, he did a vehicle inspection, found and recovered property, DW, um, DW arrest. He did five, five things.
And I'm gonna contest, I'm gonna contest that, because, Rich, you and I personally know, he went and did some personal business for a mutual friend of ours, and I don't know why it ain't rubbed out. He was out, he plays out in chess, in chess name township, all the time, he has nothing to do out there. Nothing.
With that police car.
With the police car, out there doing personal favors.
Earlier you said that you have no reason to think, I forgot how you phrase it, naturally, basically, on his job. Does anything that anybody has brought up tonight give you concern, or any reason to think opposite, what you think now? But yes, I have a list, I have a list now of things that I do think is bad. A reason why I should consider getting rid of or replacing Ferguson, is anything that anyone here has said tonight make you feel differently than that comment earlier?
If, if I had anything I could, would, would help me, is if one person could show me something that's actual factual, and not, not all that he says.
Cause that's what it always comes down to, I tend to take.
Because I, I, and I don't, I haven't been accused of sexually harassing anybody. So, I'm, I'm not in that boat right now, I, I have, and, and when I, I spend a lot of time in the restaurant business, you hear a lot of waitresses. But, you know, I, I hear that a lot, you know, but you would take, you would take at least, of all this time that's gone by, why hasn't nobody? But you would take, you would take at least, of all this time that's gone by, why hasn't nobody ever said anything?
He's perjured himself twice.
Haven't we been saying something?
He's perjured himself twice in a court of law.
Do you think that we're all making up these stories? Do you think that we're all this, bad or worse?
Yeah, I know, it's better to do.
I, I've read, I've read the articles that they brought in.
Have you called Oakland County?
Huh?
Have you called Oakland County?
Not since back when you, you guys.
Did you actually call Oakland County? That's.
It was the first group that.
Did you call Oakland County and ask anybody down there about having him as a police officer here in Oakland? I stated the last time I was here, the divers actually opened polls. And Michigan's Police Chiefs Association came to him and says he will never be a police chief in Michigan. Because of what's replaced out in Oakland County. So you, as the employer, you should be contacting Oakland, Oakland County. Regardless if you ain't hearing out to care of this community. You will down there, you will. And also there's a YouTube channel that turns around and it picks out, shall we just say, dirty cops, I'm gonna say plural. And I'm gonna say any.
Right.
They go to different communities and they explain what has happened. But as the employer, you should be contacting Oakland County Prosecutor's Office down there. Do a little night work because they're probably not gonna be too good about giving info to begin with because of the fact they says, hey. You should leave, they should have prosecuted him, but yet they says, he shouldn't have a badge is what they said. But in the meantime, he took an oath to office to protect and serve people, he broke his oath. You should be still checking down there. You like, if you like to research, Rich. Do it for us.
He lost seventeen drug cases. What if I were here?
If he perjured.
Everything would be thrown out the window because he lied.
They saved him from a felony because they fired him. Because everything he did do was a felony charge.
They'll lead their own.
And it was either the last meeting or the meeting before that he told us he didn't get terminated, that he retired.
Yep.
Where'd you get your information?
And there's nothing out there that says he retired.
Everything says he was fired.
So a while back you were protecting me too, Rich.
Yeah, this is what I had gotten from the, uh, his pension thing. But that's.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm sure he can pull a pension.
Why don't you look at the paper I gave you?
Sure.
So if you don't, you're waiting and I'm, I'm. What if you, it's just not a good fit? It's just not a good fit.
Oh, it, it, maybe it will come to that.
Okay, but maybe you don't.
But I, I don't, but my, my next concern would be, is, is if I got rid of Mark tomorrow, would it make any difference here?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, it would.
Yeah. We wouldn't be screwing the energy every day.
I do not hear, I also wanna say that nine out of ten rapists walk free because they don't have the proof.
Yep.
Nine, that's a statistic you can go read. Nine out of ten rapists walk free. I'm not calling them rapists, but in the, the realm of feeling harassed, sexual harassment, that kind of thing, where a woman feels fearful of that concern. Nine out of ten walk free. Because there's not concrete evidence, there's not a video, there's not confession.
It's good for you.
So if you are waiting for concrete evidence, I think that you're gonna be shameful for waiting for that moment if it comes.
You don't want that moment to happen.
You don't want that moment, thank you, you do, that's, please go Google that, go Google some statistics online.
You do realize that Resnick did rape of a lady, correct? That there wasn't rape?
That's public information.
Right, that mean it is.
Yep.
And he was our chief of police.
Good friend.
So, I mean, you got, you got your own.
Yes.
A once man always said, show me your friends, I'll show you your future.
That's when Resnick got here.
Yep.
Because we are half of your population here. Understand?
Half the taxpayers are sitting here.
You want, you want young families to come in and hopefully maybe, I'm, I wouldn't recommend any young woman with a family to come right now.
I wouldn't let the man lie.
If you want some.
Speaking of half the population.
If you want some happy Facebook posts to happen out there.
Yeah.
I know how you can make them happen. You know?
Rich, the one thing I want to say is, you got two so-called reserve officers out of testing just a few miles from here. Are they actual imco certified officers or they disguise them on a play with bad news?
That thing they looked into?
Brandon, I know, he's, he's all. That guy, um, McCullough? I don't know, I don't, McCullough, I don't know that much about, about whatever.
But they are an actual police officer, you think one of them is?
Yeah, I believe Brandon, he's big in test cases, yeah.
If you're, if you're looking to replace an officer. Can you look at me while I'm talking, because you always avoid me.
I'm talking to someone else, you keep interrupting, you do that a lot.
Stop, that's why, sorry.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe in that, but that was my question, they're three, four, five miles from here, not however many.
Yeah.
If you're looking, you do want an officer, if you wanna replace him, I do know, we know of one.
Very good.
He's well-loved in the community. He was working in school, now he wants to branch out somewhere else. I've told him about this place, he's more than happy to come up here.
He's not running away in height because of the Facebook?
Nope.
Nope.
Nope. Nope.
No, because he started a face. He started a Facebook, uh, police page for where he was.
Policing the police.
And he, yep, happy to.
That's why they're out there.
They say, yeah.
He teaches CPR classes, you know, he's involved in that community.
We don't need a police force, we get.
That's a good guy, he runs the kids' football games, basketball games, all that.
We've not had a good police.
That's all you need.
He would be well, well recommended.
Since mine.
We're waiting for a lot of the old treasurer, who's there? This treasurer, can you give us a couple of hundred thousand please?
Fifty-five thousand.
Fifty-five thousand? Or that's his salary?
No, that's everything.
That's it.
That's respectable for a hundred and sixty-eight dollars a week.
Fifty-five thousand.
Oh, I thought it was three thousand.
Fifty-five.
I'll talk to you.
Any further questions? All those in here, say aye?
Aye.
So, Paulie? Is that them when they gave us the last?
That is, he has the dump truck is on Facebook Marketplace place for sale. He has it listed for thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine.
Who does?
Who?
Who does?
The, the, the dump, uh, two thousand and three dump truck.
Who's he that has it on Marketplace?
Mark.
Why would Mark post the dump truck?
Because that's his.
That, that's his, that come with the, uh.
Say it again.
No, he gets, the, the equipment comes from.
Somebody gonna answer the question.
The place, whatever, the only, like, you can't go in there, I can't go in there, Rich can't go in there, Jack can't go in there, nobody can go in there, a police officer has to go in there. So therefore, he is taking it to the extent of he's in charge of it because.
You, yes, you, the L O program allows you to get stuff for your police force.
Right.
What do we need that truck for? You said even in a meeting, when, when we got that truck, nobody here even has a license to drive it, so why did we get it?
We got it with the intention to hope, we weren't gonna go with the licensing the whole nine hours. And, and I, and I told him, I said, with the insurance and the, and the victory and the fighting, I said, I told him, I said, it, it won't go. And, and as soon as we got the truck to start, you know, why do we need a truck? Why don't we have a truck? Why should we have a truck? Back and forth, and, and I told, and I, and I thought I was against it, but we got it, um.
What do we need all the generators for?
Well, hang on a minute, I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna go against them guys getting property on the ten thirty-three program, it just makes good sense.
Yes.
Because whether we use them or not, they can be sold after a certain amount of time. And that revenue comes back into the village fund. So it's a smart move. As long as it's being handled correctly and it's not corrupt. And we've seen that happen in the past at many municipalities, it's gotta be very well documented and handled legally. And that's, again, many, many questions we wanna know.
I trust it.
Handled correctly.
Yeah, and then there's like that truck, sorry, uh, the, the truck. I wasn't, you know, like, you had said you had a buddy that wanted that truck, you know? And, and I was like, okay, maybe you do, maybe you don't, I don't know.
Oh, he do, he's got excavating business up in Dallas.
But never ask if it was a running truck, if it had an engine in it, you know, it, it's.
That's bullshit, he asked you, I didn't know what.
You didn't even tell me anything about it.
That's what I said, nobody even asked about if there was an engine in the thing, and yet they're telling me, oh, yeah, well, we need to buy this way, wait. Like, I don't know anything about this truck, I mean, I'm not gonna say, you're gonna like this truck, you know?
How stupid.
I'm not here to cut it off.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, it, it's a good truck and, and when.
Can you hear us, so where is this thing listed?
Is it through Oakley?
Facebook Marketplace.
Oakley?
I don't know.
I mean, if we're asking you, ask residents of Oakley, how do we find the Oakley vehicles?
Facebook Marketplace, two thousand and three dump truck. I don't have Facebook, um, you can go online and you can find it, I saw it earlier.
Two thousand and three dump truck.
And Stacey was listing it as a Ferguson or the Oakley.
Rich. I know you're on the new business here, but. That ten thirty-three program, you guys are being used as a storefront. Nobody can take nothing off from the ten thirty-three unless you use the Oakland Village Letterhead. So when Mark is selling this stuff, you people need to know what the heck he owns, what he's picking up. Because it all belongs to the village. It does not belong to Mark, and I think that's why Pete just asked a question, who the hell is selling it? Is it the village or is it Mark?
It's Mark.
Yes, so.
It should be sold through the village website.
This stuff right here, this ten thirty-three.
It's right out of Oakland.
This is to me a disgrace, some of the stuff that's on here, because I'm gonna tell you, two thirds of this stuff we probably couldn't find. And the other problem I got is tonight I turned around and this fork truck that's a hundred and some thousand dollars on here. The reason the village has the fork truck is to turn around and apparently you're gonna be putting up a jail or a police, police department is what it is. Police department.
Free stores.
You're, you're, you're gonna be using the fork truck for that.
Are you aware of that?
Yeah, I, I've been using the fork truck to put the two thousand pound barrels I have to put on my truck.
Were you aware of that?
This is for.
I asked about a brand new police station, are we gonna use that fork truck to help build a brand new police station? Because that's what was written to the ten thirty-three to get that fork truck.
That's the reasoning.
That was the whole reason behind it.
I'll make a future plan, but there isn't anything right now going on.
Why isn't it on that piece of paper? That's, that's broad, that's broad.
He's doing shit underneath your back and you don't even know it.
Yeah, I mean, you guys should know that, are you building?
You're gonna get hung up.
Or aren't you? Because Mark says you are, you have a fork truck right now only because you said you're building a new police station. You guys are dumbfounded right now, you didn't even know it unless maybe you might wrench right through here. Yeah, but then.
He left us a truck?
Yeah.
But I mean, you're the store clerk, the stuff belongs to the village, not Mark. And you people better pay closer attention to this stuff. I got no problem with you going to get it, I got no problem with you, they're committing because of it. But you should be able to turn around and answer the question where it's at when I ask. You should be able to tell me, because you ain't got enough warehouses and enough buildings to put all the stuff you own right here. You don't.
And you as a president, when this shit goes down about where all that stuff is, coming after you too because you're the president. You're supposed to be overseeing your office.
Yep.
I believe that takes a signature from you with the ten thirty-three program.
Does it or not? No.
All it needs is.
It doesn't matter.
It just needs a letterhead. Which letterhead is all we need?
Just needs letterhead.
And that's about the letterhead.
Good.
Alright, so. You got anything else on them?
No.
At most it doesn't take a signature.
Did you look at the, the website?
Yeah, she said under Oakley property.
Yeah, listed under Oakley property as the seller.
The, the blue one you're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I found it.
Alright, motion to pay the bills?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Stewartman on the motion. Kelly on the second.
I just have a question, um.
Any further discussion? All of you, say aye?
Aye.
Supposed? Motion to.
When I was on village council, we made a motion to pay the bills in the amount of four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, thirty-eight cents. Somebody seconded that motion. Why are we not doing that here? Why do we not know what's going in and out of the, I mean, I'm not saying for you to tell me everything I might, it's just. For the month of April, we're paying or March, we're paying this amount in bills. That's all we would like to hear before a motion is made, I mean, I can go back through my, my handbook that I'm studying to be on the council again. But could we please maybe start following the, the, the guidebook for doing village meetings?
Actually, we are with the. Going to the fourth other month right now, that's our budget.
I'm just asking for the, the amount of bills to be included when I'm, I'm curbing the bill.
Yeah, I'm okay including.
That's all I would like to know.
Yeah. And, and Kurt here, he, he changed his things, he's gonna make a simplified form so that. The general public to look at and, and, and make it easier to understand.
Yeah, because that's normal.
Again, when, when there's big numbers out there, it. You know, it, it can look impressive to some people, but if you know what the debt is, it's like, oh my God, how are we gonna make it, still put tomorrow, you know?
Right.
Sorry, I was just gonna say I'm gonna include the check, I'm sure, that's a typical thing that should be made.
Yeah, thank you. Absolutely.
Total transparency is what everybody's really looking for.
Yep.
And, and it really is if you know how to read a financial statement, but we need that, we need to break it down for the general public, that's, that's the only thing that's gonna work.
Most of us got college degrees.
This statement hasn't worked.
So, wow.
How's guy?
Yeah, he asks if you can't figure out your own makes it.
Thinks they can't look her in the ass.
Brand motion to the attorney?
No, no, I got a question.
Oh, go ahead.
I just wanna make a point to you, Rich, I'm gonna be at the next meeting. I wanna know how much liability insurance the police department has. I wanna know, is anybody on this council going to step up to the plate and take over the blame? If you are, I will work with you. I will work with you for free. Next, I wanna know why this business downtown next to the post office, and I'm only assuming this. Do they have a sewer in that building? And if not, why do they not hook to our sewer?
They do, and they're being built poor.
Say, say it again.
They do, and they're being built poor.
Okay, because every time I work, I go get gas and somebody's walking from that building to the bathroom at the gas station.
They go to these facilities.
I say it twice.
I see it all the time, I talk to them again.
Okay.
They don't have a toilet.
They might not have a toilet, but they're being charged for sewer.
Uh. Let's be shutting her down then. You gotta have a bathroom working to have employees and running business in this town. Yes.
That would be a Rob Kehoe issue, I'm thinking.
Now, let's the village council send the letter, let's get it taken care of, the sewer must be up.
Yeah, but I think that, I think that Rob Kehoe as a building inspector has to go in there and verify, I don't. Yeah, but I think that, I think that Rob Kehoe as a building inspector has to go in there and verify. I don't-
Well, let's get it checked out.
I can call, I'll I'll make a phone call to Rob tomorrow and have him do a spot check.
Okay, the other question. Why are we running a restaurant down here at the church on one R U? Again, I've been after you for a year, year and a half, maybe two years. Not one R U in this town has been adjusted. Residential energy unit. They're running a restaurant, they're running a church, they're down there five, six days a week. The Catholic church down there, just because of their seating, had five and a half R Us. They used it once, maybe twice a week. But now we're running a restaurant down there. I am not against the church. I think that people do a whale of a job for our community. When are we gonna adjust these R Us? When? If you wanna hand do that, I'll help you for free doing that too. We've discussed it for years.
Yeah, uh, what you're probably not aware of is far, that the church acquired, the R Us were paid, well, not the R Us, the-
The seventy-five percent loan depreciation, but that doesn't prevent it from being adjusted.
Right.
That's so different than if I turned around and I had two different families living in my place. Now I've just adjusted it from one R U to three quarters, three quarters, which is one and a half R Us. That's the way it was set up.
And how many still are at the laundromat? Because they're doing a lot. The old laundromat is taking care of three-ten Oakley Towers. I mean, how many, how many are there?
What are you talking about?
I'm talking about the old laundromat. The owner turned it into a quote-unquote laundromat for his renters, and they have facilities in there, because I don't think three-ten has water.
Are you serious? That laundromat's being used?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I heard that the other day. I just-
I did, again, you just drive down Main Street, you see it being used. I think it's-
I mean, it's not, I don't, it's not open to the, it's not open to the public. It's-
No, but still, I mean-
Within that building, but-
It doesn't matter.
No, you're, no, you're not.
You're doing one, two, three, four properties out of that one facility.
Okay, do you know what happened with that property, Rich?
Yeah.
Are you very familiar with this? Tell me then, we'll see if we're on the same page, both of us.
One of it, the property was initially supposed to be assessed for by R Us. It never happened. They took it to court, fought it, judge denied it, blah, blah, blah. So we never got a dime out of it. It went back to the land bank. The land bank sold it to the gentleman I-
Dan Mullins?
Dan Mullins, um, his real estate, and he bought all these apartments there. He took the laundromat, tore it all out. Uh, he bought it just for the well, cause it's got a good well to feed the apartments and put all new watering in the apartments. And now they've got new water and new sewer.
So it's sharing wells.
By the way, okay, I'll tell you what really happened, Rich. You're wrong. Chris and Mark Wensley had three businesses in there. You're correct on the five R Us. Okay, what happened was that the sewer was set up with a seventy-five percent loan depreciation, a twenty-five percent balance, operation and maintenance. So what you had is you had five times seventy-five, or seventy-four hundred. That's the seventy-five percent loan depreciation. Then you had the twenty-five percent balance, which was also multiplied by five R Us. Then you had the operation and maintenance that also was multiplied by five. Chris Wensley went to the tax computer home. Jim, well, I ain't gonna say his last name. He never went to the tribunal to turn around and dispute it. What happened was that the five loan depreciations at seventy-five percent were excused, one hundred percent. That was forty-two thousand dollars and just boom, that was gone. Okay, the loan depreciation of twenty-five percent, which is a hundred and sixty-eight dollars a year, times five. The operation and maintenance, which is a hundred and eighty dollars a year, is times five. Now, whether or not he bought that from the land bank, he bought it from the village, no matter where he bought it, he is still responsible for paying for that. That's why nobody was gonna buy this church down here, because you cannot turn around and take them off. So they took seventy-four hundred times five off of that at the tax computer. Chris won. He run around crying how that he got screwed. Now, the village of Oakley got screwed. We lost a hundred and eighty times five, we lost a hundred and sixty-eight times five. And that's what you people need to do, is get back after that, get in there and get that thing here up. That don't just stop because land bank sells it.
No, no, nothing to do with the land bank.
Now, you're-
Sorry, is that being addressed? It, I I have, I haven't addressed that before, before the stand came along.
But now.
Uh, well, that's this, this where the issue, issue comes in. Like they said, the state tribunal said, no, no, there is no five R Us, period. End of conversation.
Wrong, wrong. I was on the council. Five times seventy-five percent loan depreciation was taken off. The twenty-five is still there, the O and M is there, multiplied by five, by five, that's still there, I guarantee it. And that's what you should be charging. It is there. He lost the seventy-five percent, he won the seventy-five percent loan depreciation. But the one sixty-eight times five, the one eighty times five, he owes the village for that, and that shouldn't have been paid before he even got possession of that property and brought it updated. Do you see why I told you it'd help you with this?
No, I I know what you're saying, but, um, that ain't how it ended up working out. I I do know that. The same with the, same with the, there's another one over here.
The tax tribunal keeps track of it, Rich.
I know they do.
Let's go get them records.
Bring it for next month's meeting.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to bring them.
We need to, I'm gonna race, I'm gonna get it.
Yeah.
We had a major discussion about that in our council, because we, we of course didn't say nothing, because one of our council members didn't go to Lansing and address it. But I know exactly how it ended up.
Yeah, and and then that, cause I I wasn't aware that they hadn't even put it on the damn books in the first place, um. And and then when I found out, but I was like, why, well, why would, why did we go through all this bother and 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 take it to Lansing if if it wasn't even, because they they knew it wasn't gonna happen. Not five R Us. I, if I had gone, I'd have tagged the damn thing before I paid five R Us, that mean-
He had three businesses.
That's what he has.
Yeah, he quit paying, huh, cause he couldn't stand it?
Cause he couldn't stand it.
He had three businesses going in there.
Yup.
We had the towel business, we had the barber business, we had the laundry, that's three businesses.
That's what he, yeah, that's what he had, cause then he reported it.
Yes, he did. The tax tribunal, it was five R Us.
I know what they recharge them, I'm I know. Cause we had a lot of it, and that's what we figured, this is a lot of metal, barbershop, it was something else.
So is there anything to pay on that right now for sewer? And if so, when did he take possession? And did it get started, did he took possession and caught back up? Or are you going back after the previous, which still shouldn't have been caught up by the new owner?
Yeah, we went back, we went back and took the the apartments, because I think originally there was only one or two apartments that he had millable. And we went and just one, tag one each one of the apartments with it.
Would you tag them out?
One R U per per apartment.
So it was three R Us on that apartment?
I think there's four now. I think they made a-
Are you counting the?
Three-ten.
No, no, the, do you remember the three building between the two?
Three-ten.
It could be, I don't know.
That it is.
Cause they got multiple addresses on that building, but, um, that had never been assessed anything. But it was never anybody in there.
It was empty storage for Mary Vudris.
But the thing it is, is one there, one there right here, this field right straight behind the village hall, there's six hookups on that field right there, when Joe Sova's junior owned that. And there's supposed to be like a twenty percent charge on each one of those. So that Oakley Towers down there, as you wanna call it, that should have a twenty percent charge on it, plus the twenty-five percent loan depreciation, not O and M if they're not using it. But the twenty-five percent, the hundred and sixty-eight dollars should be being paid on that.
Yeah, I I think, oh, yeah, we have the four on there right now.
Okay. He was gonna slum that.
Because he did wanna open that long, we walked back back up, but but now he says it it isn't worth it, um.
It's not worth it, if my town has a good sewer.
I have a question, and you got, real kind for one more.
I'm gonna, one more quick, and I gotta, we gotta-
Yeah, um, two meetings ago, I brought up the thought of the possibility of chip sealing our roads again. We had several positive comments from people we've always tried to maintain and keep our road. If we open something, we're gonna destroy it. Lack of maintenance is just totally going through them. Are we gonna address that, Rich? Can we address that?
Actually, I just did yesterday, and I kinda wanna talk to you about that, and then, I was like, um, with the gentleman from Spicers that, uh, came out to Duward Street, and and we're talking about the chip and seal, and and we're kinda debating, and he's gonna give me some numbers.
And I don't care what, I mean, the best process, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and and that's that's what he's gonna do, he's gonna help me through that, without having to go through, and we we will, if if we were to do something, be a project, obviously they'll get paid through our engineering department. But he he's gonna give me some numbers to to work with, so, okay, what would work best for our situation? And, cause overall, and and I'm not happy with them, but overall, our our streets are pretty prepared condition, the majority of them, the ones that are-
I wouldn't say they're-
The ones that are bad are bad, but-
But I mean, we got what we've got, and we gotta make them last as long as we can, is what I would hear.
You know, and then I'm sure everybody's aware, when you paid your taxes this year, that we got the two percent road bill that's on there, whether we like it or not, it's on there. So we now have twelve thousand dollars roughly, a year coming for that. And we are, which would be like, I believe it's twenty-nine. I'm now on the list for the five hundred and sixty-nine thousand in federal funding for our streets, for the project, for our twenty-nine project. So, you know, that that project started, so, you know, that's why it was the chip seal and or repairing, or maybe topcoing some places that, you know, and trying to figure out where-
Higher traffic streets.
We got a four-year, we got a four-year plan, and we got a current thing going on, and so it it's kinda tough, you know, you gotta look at all the different angles and the number, the traffic amount, you know, like-
Well, I guess I, it didn't make it into the minutes when it was brought up, so I'd like to make sure it gets into the minutes this time that we've discussed it, and and I'm gonna keep bringing it up, so we stay current on it, and we make sure something happens with it.
Yeah, and it was, it was nice to talk to that guy, cause he had some extra time, just, give me an idea of your, you know, from your perspective, and and the cost, because, again, I can go out and pay these engineers thousands of dollars to tell them, yeah, that's not a good idea, well, I don't wanna spend thousands of dollars, no, that's not a good idea. But and and right now they're working with us, and I'm sure they're gonna watch it, you know, the next project, cause they got it up to me. So it it's kind of a give and take, and I'm really-
So you do think we'll see any chip seal this year? Cause we need to do something with these roads.
Yeah, it's quite possible.
Are they gonna do anything with Baki Street, spray it down or anything this year? That even works?
Uh, we haven't talked about it yet, um. Yeah, it it's gonna be great, but, um, the the oil thing, I I'm not sure.
Well, I guess, if, but they are, so Johnstone knows, you see how they did it out?
I did.
So they they chip seal it, and then they-
They sold it.
But, yeah, I mean, I'm not-
I got one final goal. I just want the community to be happy and play bingo and shit. Yeah, serious.
I'll I'll work.
You know?
Right here.
Let's bring in some gambling. Let's do it. Bingo, it's fun. But seriously, we're not coming down on you guys as a council. We're coming down on you because we wanna see action from you guys. We have been here ten years. That means missions is resonant. I mean, I know you guys, some of you guys are new players in this game, but please, just take our thoughts and our considerations into heart, because you do work for us. Really, you do. I mean, you don't want your grandkids or your granddaughter getting molested or followed by a pedophile. I don't. Lock and load. We need to do something about the cops, please. I do see the state police presence, and I do love it, because they are finally pulling people over on a fifty-two. The thirty-five mile an hours is now going up thirty-five mile an hour instead of fifty-five, sixty. Thanks for calling the state police. We'll get something done. Thank you. I'm not being sarcastic, I'm saying thank you.
Thank you. Hey, motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion again.
Okay.